About our team, we were man down as far as coaches go for a lot of the season. Steve Moros, the other full-time coach or one of the other full-time coaches, has been traveling a lot for work, so it kind of put us a little short for adults. So we had, you know, a lot of great parents that have stepped up to help out. But the more importantly, we do a lot of student leadership. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to have my friend Luke actually speak tonight instead of me, because he's actually got something prepared instead of shooting from the hip. So, Luke?
Hello. My name is Luke Hunter-Holzner, a junior at Sentry. And I am the driver for the robotics team in Conceivable here in Rochester. I'm here today with some other people from the team. And I'm here today to give you a quick overview of the amazing season we've had. So early January this year, we started building our robot when we were given the details for this year's competition. And for the next month and a half, we worked five days a week designing, screwing, sawing, wiring, and regularly heading home later into the night than our parents would have preferred. We also received a visit from Superintendent Pickell to film an episode of Superintendent in the Halls, showing off our process of getting ready for our first scrimmage event in mid-February, where we got our first hint to exactly how well we were going to do this year. Our first competition was in Grand Forks, North Dakota, and we did very well, best our team has ever done. We ranked third overall, and we got very deep into the playoffs. And unfortunately, we did not take first. You know, but we still did very well and had just a truly amazing competition. And after that first event, we knew we had what it took to win, so we spent hours and hours upgrading and tuning our robot. And midway through spring break, we headed up to the cities to see if we could do it this time. And after a few days of intense competition, we found ourselves ranked number one out of 62 total teams. We went into playoffs, and after a lost match, we clawed our way up the lower bracket and took first place in finals, sending us to Houston, Texas for the world championship, which started in 10 days. So luckily, we managed to get our equipment, robot, and ourselves to a once-in-a-lifetime experience of playing with and against teams from all over the world. We ranked 10th in our division, which puts us at just about ranked top 80 in the world for championships. Then to finish out the year, we went to state, ranking 14th overall, but not making it very far into the playoffs. While not our greatest finish, we had some of the best performance that I've ever seen from a robotics team, in my opinion. And of course, it's impossible to talk about all of our success without thanking all those who supported our team during the season. Among the many we have to thank are, of course, Rochester Public Schools, all the people who donated to our team online, our many sponsors, I'm going to butcher some of these names, I'm really sorry, Mark Keasley, Deanne Fritz, Ellie Jedlica, Ann Schimek, and all of our wonderful coaches and mentors, and many others. Overall, it was an amazing season, leaving us rated in the top 5% of teams overall in our state, nation, and in the world. In this summer, we're going to be getting ready to do it all over again next year. Thank you.
And again, I see one proud parent out there. Do we have others from the robotics team, if you'd like to stand, please? Again, thank you for the opportunity to come down here and present these students and their advisors and coaches.
Thank you.
Board members, does anybody have any comments?
Well, I just want to thank the robotics team for the chance to get the pink circle thingy into the hoop thingy. And then I want to thank Michael Magombo in Communications for speeding that up when he put it in the video, because it took much longer than it looked like, actually. So you guys were amazing, and we're so proud of you. And the same thing for speech. We're always super proud of our athletes, but we're just as proud of students who are doing these kind of intellectual, creative, and artistic endeavors, too. So thanks for coming in the dead of summer. Have a great summer, and we can't wait to see what you do next year. It's going to be amazing.
Thank you. All right. Our next item are consent agenda items, 5.1 through 5.7. Would any board member like any item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Move approval?
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Roll call.
Director Barlow?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I wasn't able to hear the motion.
The approval of the consent agenda.
Yea or nay?
I don't think he can hear you still.
Approval of the consent agenda, can you hear me?
I don't think he can hear.
Oh, actually, I would like, I'm sorry if I am not recognized, but I would like to remove item 5.6 from the consent agenda.
Okay. So we've got item 5.6. So let's do a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 5.6.
So moved?
Second.
Has been moved, it has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda other than item 5.6. Now roll call.
Director Barlow?
Aye.
Aye.
Director Garcia?
Aye.
Director Paulson?
Aye.
Director Morden?
Aye.
Chair Nathan?
Aye.
Director Woodson?
Aye.
Okay, well, that'll take up item 5.6. Director Cook?
Yes, I would like to move to postpone this motion until the board's next meeting on June 18th to allow additional time for consideration and review.
Is that? I would respectfully urge the board to act on that at this time.
Okay. Any other board discussion?
Madam Chair, is it possible to hear Director Cook's rationale, or do we need a second to his request before we?
Well, because it's first, could we do like a closed session and closed session?
Well, I think the first thing we need to do is, we would have to vote on this item, and if it does not pass, then we could have a consideration of how to bring it up at a later date. I don't think we can amend this motion to postpone.
Could we move it to later in the agenda? Because I would also like to hear what he has to say, although I am-
Yeah, Director Cook can say what he has-
The motion to postpone to June 18th passes, there is no need to vote on the current motion at this meeting.
Right. Yes, that is true. You could make a motion to postpone to a later date that we can take before we vote on passing the, passing the motion. So we have a motion to postpone to a date certain, which would be the June 18th meeting, because that would be the next meeting we could vote. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Director Cook?
Well, it is, my feeling that there are a number of factors that I would like additional time to review, and I think the board would benefit from additional time to review.
Okay. Any other comments? Director Morden?
Yeah, this is a personnel issue, and I'm uncomfortable. I mean, we don't talk about personnel issues at open board meetings.
I would second what she's saying. Like, I would like to hear specifically what he has to say, but I imagine he's not able to say it right here. So is there an option to enter into a closed session or do something so that we're able to hear comments in more detail? Or at least what specific items are needed, more information?
Well, I think to discuss personnel issues, we would have to, to have a discussion on the substance of the item, we would have to go into closed session to discuss personnel issues, because we cannot discuss it in open session.
Correct.
Whether or not we do that at this time versus doing it at a later meeting is an issue. Director-
Yeah, I just have a process question. So we have a motion on the floor to move this to July 18th. There was a second, I'm sorry, June 18th. And there was a second. At what point does a board vote on that?
After discussion of the, this is simply a discussion on moving the item. So we do not have to have any discussion of the substance of the item at this point. Should the board want to have a discussion of the substance of the item, then we'd have to have a conversation of how to do that in closed session. But it wouldn't happen at tonight's meeting should we vote to postpone it.
So we can't have a closed session today, is what you mean?
We can't move in a closed session to discuss personnel issues?
Well, we'd have to amend the agenda.
Yes, we would have to amend the agenda.
I'm thinking that if there's no more discussion about this, that we just vote on the motion that's been made and seconded about postponing till the next meeting.
Well, I think my vote on that would be, it would be affected by, like, process. So if we could go into closed session, I would decline. I would rather go into closed session and vote on it today. But if we cannot, obviously, I'm now intrigued about what my colleague is concerned about and would like to hear those things. So I just need clarification on the process.
Give me a second, and I will see what our policies say about moving in closed session. Sorry, simply is not being cooperative.
There's nothing in our closed session, the items that allow us to go into closed session. We can go into closed session for consideration of allegations or charges, but that's not what this is a situation of. This is a dismissal. And so it doesn't fall into that category that we can call a closed session for. However, we are limited from data privacy from being able to discuss personnel issues in an open meeting. So we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. Yes, Director McLaughlin?
I would just note later on the agenda, we already have a closed session scheduled for a different topic, whether we could amend that part of our agenda to include this, since we're already meeting in closed sessions.
We can't, because it's for labor negotiations, and that is one of the things that is allowed in statute for us to go into closed session for. But this is not on the same topic, so we could not use that same closed session to do that. Director Barlow?
And if I just may make this comment, I, too, had initially a concern, but after speaking informally with the chair prior to the start of the meeting, and I was reminded that we cannot discuss personnel issues in an open setting, I chose not to pull this particular item from the consent agenda. And so, just a point of information.
So if you look at the agenda item, you will see that it says that the reasons related to non-renewal are classified as private personnel data under the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act, so we cannot discuss that at an open meeting. I don't know what kind of additional information the board could be provided, other than what is included in the agenda item and the letter. I don't know if that's a question for our human resources person, or?
We would not be able to provide additional information in open session, nor would we have previously done so in other settings regarding an action like this.
Director Morden?
With respect, every month, the board approves human resources actions in the consent agenda, and it's really not a school board's call to determine those actions. If there's some egregious issue, it's something else, but this is, I think this is, from my perspective, the school board overstepping. We have a personnel department and others who make these decisions, they give the recommendations every month, and this is one that I don't think, again, my perspective, that it's our business to second guess.
So I would-
Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Director Cook.
So the statutory provision that's cited in the proposed motion requires, among other things, that a written statement of the cause of discharge or demotion shall be given to the teacher by the school board. And there's that, and there's a few other provisions as well, that I just think require some additional consideration by this board. So again, I would move this body to consider this at its next regular meeting on June 18th.
Call the question.
Okay. So all those in favor of the motion to move this agenda item to June 18th, we need a roll call.
Director Barlow?
Aye.
Director Cook?
Aye.
Director Garcia?
Nay.
Director Paulson?
Nay.
Director Morden?
Nay.
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 And what was the final, 5-2?
Yes.
So with the vote being 5-2, the motion passes. So the motion on the table is-
No.
I'm sorry, failed, sorry. So the motion on the table is a motion to approve consent agenda item 5.6. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Director Barlow?
Nay.
Director Cook?
Nay.
Director Garcia?
Aye.
Director Paulson?
Aye.
Director Morden?
Aye.
Chair Nathan?
Aye.
Director Woodson?
Aye.
And the final vote? 5-2. The motion passes. All right, let's move on to agenda item 6.1, Leadership Development Update. This is an information item related to one of our strategic plan district-wide initiatives for strategic change, or DISC. Superintendent Pickell?
Thank you, Chair Nathan. It's a pleasure to ask Eric Johnson, our Director of Leadership Development, to come up, and we also have two colleagues that are well-known, Carrie Hawkinson and Sam Pearson, who are going to be talking about some of the work that they have been doing. One of the hallmarks of our strategic plan is our investment in leaders and leadership development, not just school principals, but also teachers and others who are aspiring to the principalship. And so we wanted to give the board an update on that work, which is really central to the success of our strategic plan. So Eric, thanks very much.
Thank you. Good night, or good evening, everyone. I'd like to take some time tonight to share with you our work in the Leadership Development DISC. We'll highlight some of the work that we began last year and continues to be refined. We're going to share some of the professional learning our leaders are experiencing, and how it's impacting their work. And we'll look to next steps as we continue with this component of the strategic plan. With me tonight are Sam Pearson, Principal of Franklin Elementary in Montessoria at Franklin, and Carrie Eckert-Hawkinson, Assistant Principal and Registrar at Mayo High School. They'll be talking more about their professional learning through MPA later in the presentation. So the last time I was up here, we shared with you an update on the Leadership Development DISC. We talked about our work to develop an evaluation tool and a goal-setting process for our building leaders. You might recall that through this work, we did some extensive research and learned that there's not a lot of tools out there for principal evaluation. So we set out on an effort to create our own. To do this, we used the four dimension principal framework created by Dr. Max Silverman at the University of Washington's Center for Educational Leadership. The four major components of the 4D framework include equitable school leadership, learning and teaching environment, resource management, and collective leadership. Under those overarching components, there are 10 sub-dimensions, which you can see here, which include vision and mission, culture and climate, vision for learning, curriculum pedagogy assessment, improvement of teaching, identifying priorities, aligning resources, developing talent, personal development, collaborative culture. Basically, everything you can think of that a school, good school leader should be doing. So using the 4D framework, we broke it down into further division statements that are essentially baseline goals for our building leaders. We did that and created evaluative rubrics and templates that we've shared with you at previous updates, and our leaders are now actively using those in their own professional growth and evaluation processes. To develop these, I worked directly with Dr. Max Silverman on this. And when I first reached out to Max, he made it clear that that was not the intent of the 4D framework. It was, you know, really intended for principals to learn, to see what the major growth areas are. And he said, but you know what? If you want to try it, knock yourself out. So we created the rubric, we created the goal-setting template, and they've worked pretty well. It's been a great collaborative process with Dr. Silverman, and it's been interesting, through this work, it's picked up interest from other districts as well. So Dr. Silverman's had me partner with other administrators around the country early this spring. I met virtually with leaders in Oregon who wanted to learn more about the work that we're doing, the templates and rubrics we've created, and see how they could use it to impact work with their own leaders. So that's something we're going to continue to do. Right now, as our principals are wrapping up their years, they're looking to their current 4D rubrics and templates that they've been doing their goal-setting with this year, and summarizing, reflecting, and planning ahead to next year. Our work with Dr. Silverman and the Center for Educational Leadership also continued as we partnered with CEEL and the University of Minnesota Department of Educational Leadership, and a cohort of districts from around the metro through a series on principal support. This works, our district leaders come together with some of our building leaders and principals from RPS, and we work collaboratively to focus on how district leaders can best support our principals and assistant principals as they go about the critical work of running schools. We had some honest conversations, some powerful collaboration. We plan to continue in this work as we head into the coming school year. I'm trying to move through all this really quickly so we can get to the good part, which is Sam and Carrie. Another absolutely essential component of leadership development has been our work and our partnership with the Minnesota Principals Academy. I'm pleased to share that we now have close to 50 building and district leaders who've completed or are in the process of completing their professional journey through the Minnesota Principals Academy. Our leaders in MPA meet for two days each month for a full day of learning. In addition, they engage in high-level professional reading, and most importantly, they complete an action learning project. I'm excited to share that both Sam and Carrie are here to talk tonight about their action learning projects. They're going to share with you a little about what the process looks like, the work they've done in this journey, and how it impacts their leadership. You guys want to take it away?
They're excited to hear my voice more than they already did this weekend, so, yeah, I guess I would start with the MPA process. When Jackie Peterson contacted us a couple of years ago and talked to us about the learning opportunity, I was pretty excited for it. We're very busy as administrators in buildings, and we spend a lot of time on professional development opportunities for our instructional staff, but I don't know that there's always been the attention about how do you grow, become better as an administrator? We sort of launched into it, we didn't know there was a project at the end of it, or at least I didn't, but, which we'll talk more about. But what I was most grateful for was the opportunity to network with colleagues across Minnesota, specifically Southeastern Minnesota, my colleagues in Rochester, who we don't oftentimes get opportunities to talk about things, and just to learn, to just get in a space and become students again, and to think about how that would impact our students. I made some really incredible connections. One of the individuals that I'm connected with is from Austin, and we still get together a couple of times a month to exercise, but also just talk about what are you doing with this situation? How are you supporting these students? I've been in a couple of the University of Minnesota courses with members of MPA, and just having that familiarity and relationship with another learner has been really beneficial. And then my work was with our multilingual learners and the Director of Multilingual Learning from the Department of Education. I wouldn't say we're friends, but she's certainly someone who I can call now and brainstorm with and run ideas for, to make sure that we are compliant with what the law tells us we need to do, but also best practices for students. So those are some of the professional opportunities that I gained through this experience.
I would echo what Carrie said in terms of the time, the gift of time. It's not, it's not an every-year, or certainly everyday opportunity where you are given two days, two consecutive days, to do, to have careful conversation and go in detail on readings and preparation in a scaffolded way that meets many of the components that Eric looked into with the 4Ds framework. But this idea that as leaders, you're continuing to grow, but to be part of an opportunity where you're networking with other colleagues from around Southeast Minnesota, and having an opportunity on a regular basis to be in conversation in a structured way that helps you to think about certainly the day-to-day management things you need to do, but the instructional capacity or instructional leadership that you need to have as a leader of a school, that, I would say that gift was highly valuable, and I'm definitely appreciative of that opportunity. My project was on literacy, and I looked at the components that we had within our building, and one of the things that we noticed pretty quickly is that, something that we're actually remedying now as a district, but we had some large gaps in our third, fourth, and fifth grade tier-one core curriculum. So I spent the time at MPA, working with my teachers, figuring out what are our needs. And the collaboration through this opportunity helped me to figure out kind of the best way to approach it, right? Where are our holes or gaps? What do we need to do to kind of shore up those holes or gaps? And so we came up with a plan of professional development for staff. We partnered through the Fast for Success in coordination with the University of Minnesota, and the implementation of the Fast for Success, you know, the assessments and some components of science of literacy that were embedded within that. But it was this idea of that we needed to know what we were doing better, and so we needed to know, we needed to have a better sense of how to do the things that we were already doing. And so that was one key takeaway, like, are we doing, do we have the knowledge to do the things that we have access to and are doing that well? And then finally, another one was resource, and identification that we had some gaps within the curriculum. And so certainly knowing that we were going through the process of looking at new core or tier-one resources for the district, we focused on tier-two resources. So as a school community, we looked at Fast for Success, the intervention support within that, along with another supplemental resource, Lexio Core 5. And I think the biggest takeaway for our staff was this better understanding of the skills and, the skills and needs that our student has, and more confidence within the way that they were directing instruction. And so to cap off the work that I did within this action research project was a retrospective survey. And I'd just like to read for you a few of the teacher responses as you get a sense of some of their learning as they, as they went through this, you know, kind of collaboration and figuring out what our building needs to improve the learning capacity of our students, specifically around literacy. And so let me just read for you a few comments to give a sense of like how our staff was impacted by the work that I was doing through this action research. So the question was, how has your thinking about literacy instruction changed or evolved from the beginning of the school year to now? Throughout this year, I've gotten some good reminders about all the different components that make up literacy. In the past, it was easy to focus just on Action 100 levels or- In the past, it was easy to focus just on Action 100 levels, or maybe just the Fast Bridge A reading score, but now we have various assessments that each tell us about different parts of a student's literacy skills. That allows me to plan instruction, especially for small groups, and working one-on-one with students that best meet their needs." Another, another response to that same question, "My literacy instruction has evolved from small guided reading groups focused on comprehension and fluency to having reading groups that are more flexible, change more frequently, and are meeting a variety of skill builders, phonics, vocabulary, grammar, grammar, et cetera. I feel like the needs of my students, along with a variety of literacy resources available this year, have made me more proactive in seeking out collaboration with my colleagues in special education, K-12 classroom teachers, reading support teachers, and our instructional coach, especially on phonics instruction." And so, I think these two comments share some of the value gained from, from going through a school, you know, a school kind of needs assessment and improvement process in a way that, that you're seeing some, also some action steps. And, and, and as a school building to go through both of this process as a community certainly was helpful and beneficial for us. So, I definitely think that experience at Principals Academy and then the takeaway for the things that we then did in our building were of high value for our work in our school.
Yeah, my, my project was really based on and originated from more qualitative feelings I had, and everyone who talks to me knows that I have just a big, big heart for our multilingual learners. And it really started when I was an English teacher, an eighth-grade English teacher. I learned from Dr. Jean Marvin how to teach at Willa Creek Middle School, honestly, 20 years ago in my infancy of being a teacher. And I felt like my classroom was a rigorous, grade-level-appropriate classroom where students had varying levels of success. And one of my responsibilities in the spring each year was to help students decide what the courses would be for them when they went into the high school. And I have very vivid memories of Somali females specifically coming and saying, "You know, Ms. Eckert, I loved your class this year, and you recommended I take Honors English, but I received this piece of paper, and it says I'm supposed to be in an EL English classroom next year." And, you know, early on, I would call, Mayo, I didn't really know how to navigate everything and just sort of get told that, nope, they are identified as English language learners. And for a good reason, we're concerned about our graduation rates and making sure that students are successful. This is where, you know, they will land next year. And it stuck with me, and I continue to really advocate for students. You can do this work, not just because of how you're doing in my class, but how you're doing in Mr. Lake's class and in your science class, like, you have this, like, let's talk about it. And then, years later, found myself as the ninth-grade administrator at Mayo High School. And when we would call students in to talk about their success in the early weeks of school, I started seeing again the same kinds of patterns. Our students who are not attending class on a regular basis and are not having success oftentimes seem, seem to have letters in the Skyward system that identified them as English language learners, and more frequently as not only English language learners, but also special education students, who, when I would look at their schedules for the day, I would say like, "Well, I probably wouldn't go to my classes either. It's all support classes, it's nothing that I'm interested in." And I, we started to work as a team about what supports do students really need? Like, can we look at individual needs, but then think about the collective support we can give to students? And a lot of times, our practices were based on the WEDA score that students take, you know, in the spring of each year, which again, I never can guarantee what a student's buy-in is on some of those assessments, so how valid, you know, are they? Then I moved into the registrar role at Mayo, and I got to start thinking about how are we programming for students? How can I put the right people in the right classrooms? How can we cluster students into some of those classrooms? How can I put two teachers in some of those classrooms? And often, you know, as well consider which students need more intensive support, because we are seeing not only in standardized assessments, but also in their grade-level work, that they do need some more wraparound support. So, that is really when I started working with Amy Young to kind of talk about the legislative components of support, but also looking at, you know, the entire academic performance of that student. Mayo is a little bit unique with our high schools. We have a large group of Hispanic students specifically who we identify as long-term language learners, so they've been a part of the Rochester Public Schools oftentimes since kindergarten, and we are still providing support at a pretty significant level at the high school. And so, I started working on that and looking again, going back to the base level of what has been their success, and what does each individual student, what do they really need? I would really champion the work that Natalia Benjamin has been doing to scaffold support for students and being more open to what that work can look like and what those classrooms can look like, and our MLL staff at Mayo High School who have built really good relationships with students and families and allow students to sort of spread their wings a little bit. So, we've been doing kind of a scaffolded approach at Mayo for quite some time. Next year, we will be embracing all of our students coming back to their home high schools, you know, at the start of high school hopefully, because Century will not be housing the newcomer center anymore. So, we're going to have to be a little bit more strategic, and I would be very thankful for the strategic plan that has allowed us. We had our skip goal meetings today, and we really thought about our MTS and literacy plans for all learners, but really for this, a little bit bigger group of students who are going to be coming in with language needs that we maybe haven't seen in a large amount of our students. And so, we, as a takeoff of what we're doing, we are going to have a few sheltered courses for our new-to-language, new-to-Rochester Public Schools and like students who are still growing in their skills. Clustered classes in mainstream classrooms with students who have the ability to do that as well, and then co-talk classes. But we, in our meeting today, talked about capitalizing on our student body, many who are multilingual learners as well, and maybe have gone through parts of that program and whose language is continuing to evolve, but having some of those students be teacher assistants in those literacy courses, so they're in the classroom with our MLL teachers, but they are native speakers and will hopefully share languages with some of the students who are in that class, so they can support our teachers in that classroom. And then, I have used the example all day, so if I have a tenth grade student in a literacy classroom, they take chemistry as well, and some of these students would also be in a shelter or in a regular chemistry classroom. That TA who's in the literacy course with those students could be in that chemistry clustered class, and now we have relationships and connections as peers, and they can also help to facilitate the content in, you know, native languages of our students who are in there. So, building on the capacity of our students and their own leadership and connections in our building and feeling like they are all a part of the work at Mayo High School.
So, and I'm so appreciative of Sam and Carrie for sharing this information with you guys tonight. If you can imagine this type of high-level technical instructional leadership happening across the first 16 that completed the MPA cohort in '23 with your group, and now we have another 32 members currently doing the same type of work as well. And we had some previous to that. So, we have 50 people have done this type of high-level focused instructional leadership happening in our principals, in our assistant principals right now, which I think is incredible. When I think about principal prep programs, they tend to focus on the administrative tasks. I remember, you know, if you teach, if you take the principalship class, the highlight is the inbox activity. You know, a neighbor called, you know, your pickup line is too long, what are you going to do to address it? Or, you know, you've got a student conflict you need to resolve. Those are the types of things that principal prep tends to focus on. However, as we know, and as I've shared with you in a previous update, the principal is the most single critical component in terms of affecting student growth in any school. And what's really great about MPA is the focus is on instructional leadership. It's not the administrative piece, it's instructional leadership. And we are working to create instructional leaders first. And you can see clearly, the level of instructional leadership that's happening, and the work that's happening through the ALPs and how that's impacting their schools and their students, it's really truly incredible. On Monday and Tuesday next week, our current 32 members of the cohort are going to be diving into math instruction for two days during MPA, and I'm really excited to see how they embrace that. That is going to be a lift, and it's going to be, right now, they're probably all at home doing their pre-reading, there's quite a bit, and they're focused and they're driven, and it's really awesome. So, MPA has been an important, supercritical piece of leadership development. I want to thank them again for their work. Couple of the quick updates that I want to share with you. You may remember that last year, we began an aspiring administrator cohort. We were, I know that when I was, you know, working on becoming a principal myself, my goodness, that was a long, long time ago. It was really hard to find time to do your principal hours, your intern hours, like student teaching only for principals. And so, what we've worked to do is create a time where our district staff, who are working to become assistant principals or principals or other leaders, can step in and say, if our principals are attending MPA, they are essentially subbing for them while they're out. So, it kind of kills two birds with one stone. We have support for the buildings when our leaders are attending important professional learning, and they get a chance to learn and grow doing practical work as interns. So, we had an initial cohort last year of 12 district staff who participated in the aspiring administrator program. I'm pleased to say two members of that cohort were hired as assistant principals for this previous school year. This year, we went to 30 district staff who provided over 250 days of administrative support, instructional leadership to our buildings while our principals and assistant principals were at professional learning. And once again, we have a member of the cohort who's been recently hired as an assistant principal. So, we're really pleased to continue to grow that program. We started bringing the group together for professional learning once a semester. They do networking, we do Q&amp;A with our principals, they learn more about what it's like to be a principal. So, we hope to continue to grow that program. And then finally, looking ahead, what's next for leadership development? Well, we're going to be getting together, through that work we did with CEEL and principal support, what we heard from our leaders was, "We want more professional learning." So, if you can imagine, on top of MPA and on top of all the other work that we're doing, they want monthly embedded professional learning that's responsive to their needs. So, through that CEEL principal support framework, we have a group that's getting together, principals are saying, "This is something that's coming up, we need to know more about it, can you help us find some professional learning around it?" And then, we're going to work to provide that during the day so they can come in and get some additional support, some professional growth, and we're really hoping to refine that process. Ultimately, as you can see, what we're trying to do is really build the capacity of our leaders to be autonomous and strategic, to be thinking about high-level decisions, implementing the strategic plan. You heard Carrie talking about the work we did today with our skip retreats. But ultimately, above all, we want them to be strong instructional leaders. Based on what I saw tonight, what you guys showed us, clearly that's what's happening. So, thank you.
Board members, any questions? Well, I'd like to say that I, oh, go ahead. I just have more of a comment, is that okay?
Sure. Okay. I just want to comment on the fact that I just see you as great role models for the students and the staff, not only the deeper learning and the advanced learning that you're doing, but also the community building. It's just great to hear, and I appreciate that.
Dr. Brother.
A couple of questions. So, obtaining the K-12 licensure, obviously, well, I shouldn't say, wasn't enough. That certainly qualified and allowed you to met the basic threshold to become a assistant or principal. I like the fact that from wherever the idea surfaced to develop the Minnesota Principals Academy, that this district bought into it, continues to support it, and you guys are a part of that. And to listen to the action learning projects you both were a part of, how insightful the knowledge you've learned. Carrie, I in particular appreciate the, Sam, yours was good too. Carrie, I appreciate hearing a comment that I have heard parents in the past express, relates to, "Well, once you're in the labeled EL, then you're kind of stuck," at least from their point of view. And, and so, I was glad to hear that you were able to recognize that and have worked to create other avenues for those students who are truly able to excel. And then finally, the aspiring administrative cohort was not initially designed to perhaps allow aspiring administrators who were also trying to obtain their hours, to get their licensure, to kind of get their hours so they could get their licensure, and now there, you probably have many that have their licenses already, and you're able to allow them to fill in the gaps, as you've already suggested. And so, what does the future bode in terms of, we probably have a number of fully capable individuals that have their licensure in this K-12 arena? And what a asset to the district to have individuals who are so inclined, and then the district itself recognizing that and creating opportunities? And so, the examples, Sam, I haven't spent a lot of time at Franklin, but I hear a lot of great things regarding that. So, what you're doing, you guys are making a difference, and I think as Director McLaughlin referenced, that's really what it's all about, not just attaining the position, but making a difference in the classroom, providing the leadership to staff and to lead the way. And so, thank you for doing that and to the rest of our principals and aspiring administrators. I'm sure they'll be able to look to you and say, "Yeah, that's why I want to become a principal or an assistant principal." So, thank you.
So, I'm so glad that you emphasized the role of our principals as instructional leaders, because I don't know that that is something that in general, I think they look at you as being in charge of the building, but that administrative piece that you say is really emphasized in their training. But, you know, we've been commented by many people in the community recently to, "Why aren't we focusing on reading and writing and math?" And it's not just the teachers who get our students the reading and writing and math instruction that they need. It needs to be the right environment, there needs to be a plan and direction and coordination, and all hands on deck. And what I've seen in kinds of presentations that we've gotten, both in, from the Principals Academy or from our skips, shows that cohesion, that coordination, but somebody has to be in charge. And the fact that we are giving our principals the time to learn the skills, not just from best practices, but from each other. One of the things that I thought was missing in this district for a long time was the ability of buildings to learn from each other. And I have heard many times that one of, this opportunity also gives our buildings an opportunity to learn from each other. So, I appreciate your leadership in this, Mr. Johnson, as well as your time and effort, even though you didn't know there was a project at the end, how'd you miss that? And I look forward to seeing how this, how this grows and what actually happens for students in the classroom. Dr. McLaughlin.
I did come up with another question. Mr. Johnson, the last part of your slide talks about connecting this up to improving educational outcomes for students. Can you talk about that? Is it something you can measure? How do you define progress in that area?
Well, I'll come back to the skip process. You know, everything, you know, that we're doing, you know, funnels through the skip process. You know, as Carrie said, we had our first day of our skip retreat today, and that is strategic planning at the building level. And our principals, our assistant principals are leading that process. They're guiding staff, they're aligning their resources and supports, directing the course for the year. Every building has a goal that's focused on reading improvement and providing interventions for the students who are struggling. Every building has a goal around deeper learning, and other buildings are, you know, extending to other places as well. But it's our principals and assistant principals who are setting the tone and directing that effort at the building level. So, that's where I would say it starts from.
Could I add to it, just with all the other things? Everything we've talked about tonight, I mean, it's kind of like when, well, you went to principal school, you went to teaching school, you learn kind of how to do it, but until you're in it, you have no idea what you're up against. And so, I think it's a gift that we have aspiring leaders actually in buildings seeing the work, because then you know what you need to be prepared for. It isn't hard to make sure everybody shows up to work on time, it's all of the other things that come into play so that students can feel great when they come to school and can be focused on learning, and that- And that, all of this collectively together allows us to be really incredible leaders for you and your buildings, so you can sit here and, you know, hear about all the incredible things that are happening. Like, I didn't want to come up here after the students and coaches were speaking today. This is what you get in your buildings when you step back and let people lead for you. So you learn more when you're doing it right, and talking and networking than you did when you took your classes and read the books.
Yeah, Superintendent?
Thank you for the presentation and for your time. Thank you. Our next item is a monitoring item, 7.1, the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee update and discussion. Superintendent.
Thank you, Joe Nathan. When I got to Rochester three years ago, I candidly, I was surprised, we had no Citizens' Budget Committee that was advising the board and the administration on the use of financial resources. And so this board has created one, and we are in the beginning stages of the effort to empower a diverse group of stakeholders in Rochester Public Schools to really understand the complexities of school finance and to provide us with insight. And we are excited to give the board and the community an update on a work in progress. It's exciting to welcome Denise Moody here, who now has the title Director of Innovation, and this is a precursor of things to come. Denise's new role will really be leading the change work, in particular, resourcing it through fund development tied to strategic initiatives and plans. And so I'm excited in talking with the board about what that work is going to look like over the course of the next year. It's one of the final parts of our strategic plan to roll out. Jennifer Woodford, as you all know well, is a president of our Rochester Area Foundation, and Jerome Ferson is president of our Homestead, United Way, Homestead County. And so thank you so much for your service on our C-Bac, as we've started to call it. Did we do that? I think I did.
Okay, we're still emphasizing C-Bac. Yeah, we're happy to be here and be able to share a little bit about the work that we've done in this first year of our C-Bac. And yeah, I'm thankful for Jerome and Jennifer that they are going to share a little bit about their experience, but we are going to start off just by setting the stage of kind of what C-Bac's been doing and who our members are. Will we get the slides up?
Yeah.
Yeah, press the button. There it is. Okay. So you will see that we have a group of talented people. It says be close, but not that close. Okay. Sorry about that. We have a group of talented people that have agreed to sign on for a two-year term to help us support our work around advising on our budget and things financial within the district. So we are really thankful for all of the individuals that have been willing to spend some time on a project that maybe isn't always the most exciting topic. Yeah, I'll do this. Okay, sorry. So the purpose of the group, we just want to review, is to, you'll see the bullet points that we have here, but it's really about first, understanding the structure of our budget, and then providing some feedback to us as community members. Many people come with a lot of professional experience in their own organizations and in their own professions that have been really valuable for us. So helping us make sure that in our communication and in our budget and in the decisions that we're making, that, just providing an advisory role that we are on track and being able to provide feedback for us as we're doing that. So you'll see a couple of items there, really giving us feedback on specific findings, issues or concerns related to district finances, budget enhancements and reductions. And that last bullet point, I think, is one, as we continue to kind of grow into our role as a C-Bac community, C-Bac group, I guess this has really been, it's been a building year, really laying the understanding of the group to be able to, I think, move more fully into fulfilling its purpose. But one thing specifically for me is, on that last bullet point, really thinking about transparency and clarity and effectiveness of our communication and how we're talking about the budgetary pieces of financial matters of the district has been really helpful to me. Sometimes we're really close to it, as you're going to be jumping into the budget this next presentation, that sometimes it's really helpful to have an outsider's kind of perspective at looking at those things, and that's been really helpful for me and I think a couple of my colleagues. We had four meetings. So our first meeting, we really looked at some of the history around our finances. We talked about kind of the, what was happening when we built our new schools, previous rounds of budget cuts, and then looking forward to the technology levy that was on the ballot in November. Yeah, meeting two, Mr. Carlson took us through a riveting review of School Finance 101, and all of, everybody stayed with us through that, and we reviewed the 23-24 budget, again, just building capacity of our C-Bac numbers to be able to provide input. Meeting three was in January, we looked at our five-year forecast, we looked at the budget parameters, the principles of strategic funding redesign that were shared with you as a board we reviewed, and just did some reflecting on the ballot question that was on last November. And then our last meeting was in April, again, looking forward to the budget for '24-25, looking forward to a referendum meeting. And then a focus on our rethinking funding initiative that we are going to start bringing to the board. I believe the first presentation is on August 6th. Many members of our C-Bac committee volunteered or agreed to participate in some additional meetings over the summer as our advisory group for our rethinking funding initiative. So we are grateful for them, we're adding those additional meetings to their calendar, and really appreciate their input on that. So with that, I am going to turn it over to, it looks like Jerome first, to share a little bit about his experience within the C-Bac committee and why he joined and what he thinks, how he thinks they can be supportive of us as a district.
Well, thank you, Denise, and thank you to the school board for this opportunity to share with you the experience that I've had on the Community Budget Advisory Committee. I don't think I'm the C-Bac. So why did I join the Community Budget Advisor Committee? I think that's a really challenging question to answer in a short. I think I'll start by saying, you've probably all heard the African proverb, that it takes a village to raise a child. And contained within that proverb is a, I think, a moral imperative for us to help every student succeed. So that's kind of the belief that I bring to my work at United Way, my work with Cradle to Career, and in my work with the Rotary Clubs of Rochester. So there's lots of alignment there. At the end of the day, though, those efforts and the resources that those organizations have pale in comparison to the resources that many Rochester schools deploy is to further the goal of helping every student succeed. And so for me, maybe a bit of a geek around finances, but the fiscal responsibility and the flow of resources is an important aspect. So it's a leverage point, creating a system that helps every student succeed. So I see it as augmenting my work by being involved in the Community Budget Advisor Committee. In terms of what I've learned, I would say there's a lot of learning occurring. The riveting presentation by Mr. Carlson related to the finances of the school district certainly had its moments of learning. But I think for me, the highlight so far is just understanding how the power dynamics within the community, not just our community, but across the state and country, have shifted from institutions to the individual, in this case, to families, having the choice of where they send their children to school, and the effects of enrollment and attendance on the overall finances of the district. There's been a lot of learning there for me. I just see it as similar to some experience that I had in the newspaper industry, where consumers of information develop choice, a lot of it more, less expensive, maybe higher quality, who knows? But it was a shift from a monopolistic environment to a competitive environment. I see the school district wrestling with some of those same dynamics when it comes to adjacent, maybe districts, or just the mobility of today's workforce and families moving in and out and the mobility. I knew that it existed, but I have a deeper appreciation for it. It's only been four meetings?
Plus the extra. Yeah, so good.
So enrollment, and the other thing I appreciate, many times, I've been involved in a number of advisory boards over the years, and oftentimes, they are a checkbox on somebody's strategic plan. But when you step into the environment, you get, it's mostly lip service that's being provided to the desire to become more transparent or to engage the community in more effective decision-making. My experience in this advisory committee is the complete opposite. Starting with Dr. McKell, Mr. Carlson, Mr. Crogstad, Denise, the rest of the staff that's involved, there's a genuine passion to improve the approach to budgeting for the school district. And that's recognized, appreciated, so that's also a key part of it. I think finally, I'm a fairly reflective person, probably a little bit more so tonight because I'm just getting back from Singapore, having a little jet lag, but I think reflection's an important part of being an effective leader. And just sort of from professional development, not only our principals, institutional leaders, the school board, and administrators at the district level, are also institutional or instructional leaders. I think reflection is a key part of that practice. As an institution, creating space through the Community Budget Advisor Committee for the organization to reflect on how it's allocating resources in a non-threatening environment, where maybe there's not a pending decision that's, you know, that's been voted on that night, I think it's healthy, and I think only good things will come from that, so I can act on the district longer term. If they set that to continue, so that we can figure out a way to maintain continuity of knowledge through your cycles, you know, I think it's only good things will come. That.
Thank you. So when asked if I would do this, I always look at two things, you know, how does this align with my work professionally, within the foundation, and personally, do I feel a passion for what this group is being asked to do? And so personally, I didn't grow up here, but I did have two kids who went to Rochester Public Schools. Harry Bishopold dogs, Jeff Peterson, who was their principal for a while, went to John Adams, were John Marshall Rockets, and have recognized, and now as they've moved on to college, the strong educational background that they had when they were growing up here at Rochester Public Schools. And so personally, being able to get back to that is important to me. And professionally, the mission of the foundation is to build better and stronger communities for all. And one of the ways we do that is in our role as a community convener and connector. And the more that we know across our staff, the more we can advocate for needed resources in our community, for many groups and organizations, and Rochester Public Schools certainly is no exception. What has it been like to participate in the group? As Jerome said, we've learned a lot about numbers, and I am no stranger to large budgets, or I felt like I was no stranger to large budgets with restricted avenues of funding. But this takes that to a whole other level, especially when, as Jerome mentioned, you take into consideration so many factors outside of your control with enrollments. You know, you can only use this funding for this, you know, you must meet the standard, but you can only use that funding to get to that standard, and it really has been an incredible learning opportunity. And it's really been enjoyable to watch so many people who sit around the table in this very room, really who, I think, people thought, we kind of knew maybe how it operated at the basic level, but really get to know what goes into the Rochester Public Schools' budget and the process to develop that on a much, much deeper level. And truly, the conversations that happen around what that means for Rochester Public Schools, and I don't mean as the entity, I mean for the students, for the staff, for those people where it affects their daily lives. Where can this group really make an impact, I think, is the most exciting to me. And Jerome, I did not coordinate our remarks, but the one thing I would, one of the things that I would echo that I've heard him say, is that I truly sense, I mean, you know, working with several staff who are in this room, Superintendent McKell, Directors McLaughlin and Cook, a true desire and a genuine desire on the part of Rochester Public Schools to take the feedback and the conversation and use it to make our schools and therefore our students and our community stronger. I mean, that is a true, it doesn't seem like a checkbox, I didn't have that exactly written down, but it doesn't at all seem like that. It truly seems like, how can we, as a community, work to make this process better? And that's been, I think, something that this group really can bring to the table, is that collaboration in a way that's very neutral. The people that sit around the table are there, all of them, because they've agreed, and the agendas are put to the side, and it's just, you know, explain this to me, you know, how does this, how do these pieces fit together? And I just think it's a really unique way, a very neutral way, for our community to come together and really dig into some pieces that can ultimately make your community stronger.
Thank you both. That being said, I said we were on two-year terms, and we don't want all of our group to turn over right at the same time. We do want to be thoughtful about that continuity of kind of the collective group knowledge. So we are welcoming if there are new members that want to join. So we did have a process of applying and being onboarded onto the team. So if people are out there and interested, or if you're talking with individuals, we are welcoming new members as we start up in the fall.
Board members, any questions?
I just have an observation I'd like to make. I've had the pleasure of working with all three of these individuals in the past on various boards and/or committees, and as I look at the list of the current Community Budget Advisory Board, I'm thinking, what a blessing, if you will, to have people who are invested in the community and who are able to view the role that you play beyond the organization you represent. Because there is a, as you have shared, an interconnectivity that exists. And yes, we all are better together when we are striving to achieve and develop that commonality. And so whatever we can do, you know, to encourage the current makeup of the board, to let you guys know that you are valued, that we see, we're not just using you, but, though we are, yes, but that you are truly valuable. But beyond your participation on the board, the current organizations you represent, how we can be of support to those organizations and help you to even excel beyond what you currently are. So please give us feedback regarding that.
I was just going to ask you a question about the application process. So I know that when we created the charge statement, we're very intentional in identifying sort of representation for various sectors so that we could reflect business input and our diverse communities. So are we still striving to do that in accepting these, or in recruiting and accepting these applications for the fall?
We are, yes. And we do believe that we have the opportunities to continue to encourage people to participate. And so we've heard from a couple of people in our community that wanted to be involved that were maybe not specifically on our list, and again, wanted to encourage diverse voices and make a way for those that might be interested to reach out and indicate interest.
And is there a link to like a public copy of the application somewhere?
The first step is to reach out to me, and I do believe we have a website about volunteering that I think currently has John's name on it as the contact, so I will change that and update that with this.
Okay, so on our Get Involved page on the website, there's a link to the Community Budget Advisory Committee contact. Perfect.
Superintendent?
Jerome and Jen, thank you for being here. We didn't ask all of the members of the committee to come, but I just want to say probably the best excuse for us not asking is our student representative, Tej Bhagra, who is playing in the state tournament now, he's the best tennis player in Minnesota. Go Tej, so thank you.
Board members who are on the committee, Dr. McLaughlin, Director Cook, did you have any observations you wanted to share? Sorry, not to put you on the spot, but...
Well, I mean, I guess I look at it kind of two different ways, that, first of all, it is still a lot of education after being on the board as long as I have and listening to Mr. Carlson, but it brings that community perspective to it, too, which I think is refreshing and an additional layer of the education of the transparency and what we share with the community and the feedback that we get. So it's still a learning process, but I'm very grateful for being part of that so that I can see it firsthand.
Dr. Cook?
Director Cook?
Well, I would just echo Director McLaughlin's comments. I think it's a, that this district is very fortunate to have the level of engagement that we do from our community concerning the resources that our district has and how they are allocated. And I think really, even beyond that expert attention that we're benefiting from and the input that we're receiving, there's been some very constructive dialogue on alternative ways of thinking about the discretionary funding that the district does have. And it's just been a very productive, very engaged group of very qualified people. So yeah, I think we're lucky to have this Community Budget Advisory Committee.
I just want to say, having worked with Jerome and Jen previously in collaboration around improving our education for our students, we are very lucky to have your brains at the table. And looking at the list of the people who are there, we are lucky to have people who are so invested in other ways, in your home organizations, in the success of our kids and our community, that you're bringing your time and your talents to our table. And yes, willing to dive into that budget, we really do appreciate it, and thank you so much. Board members, it's seven o'clock. Would you like to continue, or do we need to take a break? We're going. Okay, I say, I heard go. Item 8.1, Prep for Action 2024-2025 Budget Proposal Overview. This is the first discussion of our 2024-25 budget. We will also discuss it again at the July 11 study session, and it is scheduled to be an action item on the June 18 regular meeting. Superintendent McHale?
June 11 study session?
The June 11 study session and the June 18. Did I say July?
I think you might.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. As board members are well aware, when we built the annual board calendar, we anticipated a much more challenging budget season for this spring than we are in fact enjoying. The one-time major contribution from Mayo Clinic, the board's approval of one-time use of reserve funds, a strategic increase in some revenue that we received through third-party billing and other efficiencies, has given us a relatively calm budget year for the first year since I've been in Rochester. But as I'm going to be a broken record over the next several months, we can't get too comfortable, because the strategies that I believe are going to allow us to present you with a board that does not require the kind of difficult reductions that you have approved the previous two years, will not be present next year if the referendum that you have voted to place on the ballot is not successful. But let's enjoy this moment. John and Andy and their team have done great work in preparing for the board, a solid proposal. I am continuing to be incredibly confident in the caliber of our accounting and our financial projections, and so I look forward to this overview. We'll have an opportunity at the study session, as the chair said, to dig more deeply into this in whatever ways board members find helpful. John and Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent McHale and Chair Nathan. Andy's going to do most of the talking here. I'll just set up very quickly that our focus is mostly going to be on general fund and on expenditure, since we focused on revenue last time. And then, as Superintendent said, we're going to go a little bit deeper next week at the study session, when you are probably going to have a lot more questions for us. So Andy, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson, Chair Nathan, members of the board, Dr. McHale. I'm so happy to be here in front of you again. I think it's number three now, so just a little bit of a reminder, and I think Chair Nathan touched on this, where we've been, where we are, and where we're heading. Here's the schedule that we've been following so far, and as you know, we've got two more sessions, which we've mentioned. And as John has indicated, tonight is all about expenses and primarily, actually all, exclusively general fund expenses as we work through the budget process, which has, of course, been ongoing, and it started really in earnest with our staffing meetings, which produced an FTE count of slightly over 2,600. And that's district-wide, but within the general fund itself, there's about 2,398 FTE in the budget, which is 92% of all of the district FTE. The rest of the FTE, the other 8%, are in other funds such as our Community Education Fund and our Student Nutrition Services Fund. We'll talk about those more in depth next week, of course, but at the same time, I just wanted to mention where they exist, so that you wonder where the other 8% didn't just fall off. Of the 92%, or of that almost 2,400 FTE, if you mind, I'll just round up just for ease, about 83% of that is primarily, or almost entirely, student-focused and student-serving, meaning they have direct contact with the students each and every day. Class-sized targets are unchanged this year, and as a result of our additional revenue and some of the opportunities we had, we didn't have to look at increasing those class-sized targets. It's important to understand that these are our targets that we use for budgeting purposes. These are not the same targets, these are not the same class sizes that were part of the Rochester Education Association Negotiation Session and Contract that allows them to be compensated additionally if they exceed a class-sized target. Those class-sized targets are different than these. As a matter of fact, they're lower than these. However, these are what we use for budgeting purposes. So for example, we take the enrollment at a particular school in kindergarten, and we take that, we divide that enrollment by 21 to arrive at how many FTE that particular site should have. These numbers are fairly, I wouldn't say, they, there is some interpretation. And when I say interpretation, what I mean is, of course, we, nothing is perfect, right? So we have enrollment that may just nudge a site over one FTE or just a little bit under one FTE. So there is a little bit of nuance that takes place as some of those discussions occur, so that we're staffing right exactly where we believe, both budget-wise and from the academic perspective. As these numbers are monitored throughout the summer, once we've achieved essentially two over across all of our, when, I should say, when we would be two over across all of our particular sections, we would add an additional FT. So for example, if we had three schools, or excuse me, three FTE in kindergarten, and we are at 63 students, or 63, yeah, 63 students, do the math, Andy. If we were up to 60, what would that be, 6, 69, thank you, John, I should have had my math ready, we would then add an additional FTE, we would then take those other students and divide them and equal all of our class sizes. So a lot on class-sized targets, but ultimately, the thing to remember, unchanged this year. We also discussed a lot, our healthcare premium contribution increases. As a whole, we're estimating that number to be about $7 million. Within the general fund, which will assume a vast amount of that increase is about 6.5, almost 6.6 million dollars. So as we do a little bit deeper dive next week, you'll notice that there is a little bit of that increase spread across the other funds where we have other FTE. Teachers, principals, administrators, they have contracts that just recently settled, or we hope will be settling, we expect, teachers and principals, and I believe administrators hopefully will be later tonight. But in any case, those contracts, both what has settled and what is projected to settle, have a 4.14% increase across the budget next year. We do have obviously some other contracts and work agreements that are coming due, and they'll begin, actually, some of them are being negotiated as we speak, maintenance, clerical, and I know there's some other conversations taking place. We do include in the budget a reasonable estimate of what we think a settlement might cost. So those dollars are in the budget at this point in time. I do want to take a minute and talk about the summer unemployment. This was a change in legislation last year, 2023. That change came very late in the school year, and the actual cost to the district for added unemployment for hourly employees was, I'll say only, but of $400,000. As we compared what we paid out in unemployment costs last year to others around the state, many, many of them smaller districts, they paid out considerably more. So we believe that as the word has spread that this is available and that we know unions have begun to educate their membership more, that this is an available summer resource, we fully expect a much larger expense next year. We do this year as well, obviously, we'll have one month or so of that, but the vast majority of our summer unemployment will be July, August, and then obviously June of next year, and we expect that number to be much larger. So we're actually factoring in an increase of about $800,000. That would make our total spend of about 1.2 million. And the state did allocate, legislature did allocate $35 million, but that is already into a proration status, meaning MDE is dividing that up, it's not a dollar-for-dollar reimbursement. So we really only believe we're going to make $500,000 based on our best estimates of what is available. MDE has not given us any guidance of what we could expect, because obviously, it depends on what is submitted for expenses that will be prorated. So we do expect there to be a net cost overall to the district as a result of this legislation change last year. Of course, we've talked at great length about the transportation contracts, so we're factoring in a $2.7 million increase for those. REED Act implementation, and this was recent legislation change this year. I only want to mention this because as we review the budget, you will see some of these numbers that perhaps skew the, for example, a program, a report that's by program, right? You may see, all of a sudden, why do we have so much more money? Well, this is an example of an expense that is in the budget for next year, but there's offsetting revenue. So we're going to find that in many cases, the REED Act, for example, both the implementation materials and the training costs, there is reimbursement. We don't know if it's going to be 100% reimbursement, because it's in the form, it comes in the form of aid, and of course, we're estimating what our costs are, but we think, based on that working group, we think we're going to be really close to covering all of our expenses with those aids. Finally, we look at a few other of our line items, high-level line items. Natural gas, this is, I did a little bit of a deep dive into all of our utility costs, and as I began to factor in and looked at natural gas and the costs over the last three years, this was an area where I felt was likely we could actually do some decreasing in the budget. We know we had a very mild winter last year, and we don't know that we'll have another mild winter again. But I believe we still have the ability to make a reduction in natural gas and still have enough to cover. Now, if we have multiple blizzards and months of below zero or lower, you know, that may, my assumption may prove to be incorrect, which is why we have a contingency account, because it's there to help address any shortages in our budgeting process, but also address anything that comes up that is unforeseen or unknown at this particular time. And right now, that is established at $3 million. This year was $2.75 million. We are increasing it slightly. However, I do think that that number may come down a little bit before we present our final budget, because we do have some additional slight modifications to make, and the intent is that we do not change our overall budget number, but we would take any changes between now and final adoption out of that contingency amount as well. Finally, just taking a look at our major categories of expenditure and how they break out in our general fund, and you can see, obviously, as expected, salaries, wages, employee benefits make up 79% of our overall costs. Purchased services include those items such as bus services, those contracts. It would also include utilities, it includes, what else was it going to include? That's, help me out there, John, what else is on the detail there?
Insurance.
Insurance, that's a good one. Insurance went up, which was addressed this particular meeting, the consent agenda, so that's purchased services. Supplies and materials, only 3%, but we do see an increase in that particular category this next year. Some of those dollars related to software licensing and subscriptions, specifically, not entirely, but that's an area where we can go into a little more detail next week. And so as you can see, our total fund expenses are $296,551. And that, I didn't put the slide in there because I didn't, I really wanted to focus this on expenses, but the net effect between the revenue and the expense is slightly under the $7 million that we agreed, or that you allow us to use in reserves, that you've agreed to allow us to use from reserves. It's about $6.7 million right now. So we fully are staying within the parameters that were approved by this board, and we believe that this is a budget that still provides all the services that we are currently providing, and this is really, for lack of other words, sort of a status quo here. We are able to really fund and provide, or should say fund, and then therefore continue to provide the same level of services that we are for next year that we are this year. So that's a very high-level view of the general fund, and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I'll dive in. Thank you for the information you're providing tonight and the information that you've provided in the board packet. Mr. Carlson knows that the Budget Book is one of my favorite publications every year, so if someone were to look at our materials, especially the document on FTEs, there are line items that represent different positions, and there are increases in some positions and decreases in some positions, so this is the question I ask every year. If it looks like someone's position is decreased, are they finding another position in the district? Are we cutting people from the district? That's the first question. And are some of those increases and decreases we're seeing not necessarily reflective of a position being eliminated, but a title being changed?
Almost entirely would be the latter, title changes, or restructuring of the positions which require a title change, or perhaps in some cases, we've had positions such as our, once our administrative union was formed, we had some positions that were previously in the operations group, moved into the administration group. So you'll see when you look at the FTE count, especially the detail, you'll see some negatives and some positives, and generally, they net themselves out. There were no targeting or any reductions in staff in this particular budget cycle. So as you look at that detail again, for example, a minor one would be, I believe there was Special Education Coordinator previously, and now it's Coordinator of Special Education. It's the same role, but when you look at the detail, you're going to see previous years where it was one title, now it's a slightly different title. That's a lot of what you're going to find in that particular document.
I would just follow up to, to my knowledge, we have not officially put anyone on unrequested leave of absence, which is another term for layoff, and so unless, okay, there might be one.
Let's not freelance here.
Yes.
Thank you. We're just going to answer the questions.
Any other questions or comments? So what can we expect for the study session next week?
I think what we're going to do next week is, we're going to pull all of this together. That's going to be the first thing. So we're going to look at all of our revenues and our expenses. We're going to focus a lot on the general fund again, because that's where the vast majority of our expenditures, and the ability for this board to have impact, right? That will be our main focus. We're also going to obviously go through all of the other funds as well, because they're part of the overall budget. Most of those funds, though, are self-sustaining, and so therefore, there's really not as much modifications or changes of those budgets from year to year. So that will be what we expect, and we're going to, you know, I think we're going to spend a little bit more time on the FTE count and addressing some of those concerns. So a more broad discussion, but that's going to be, I think, how we pull it all together now.
Great. I know, I'll look forward to it, I don't know anybody else.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, could I just raise, before we...
Madam Chair, could I just raise, before we move on to the next piece, I do, I recognize that we are deep in the meeting and the point of process. I wouldn't want to hold this should board members feel it relevant. I know earlier tonight, we did have some lack of clarity around the board's processes. And in sitting here looking actually at Policy 203.6, Consent Agendas, if a board member in Point D, if a board member pulls an item from the consent agenda, the policy reads, "If a school board member requests that a human resource item be removed from the consent agenda, the board chair may ask for a motion to move into closed session to discuss personnel issues." So in fact, the board did have a capability that I think on the fly, on short notice, we were unaware of. And so I want to raise that board members at minimum for our collective education going forward. I wish I had been quicker, and John and I, I'll be honest, were texting a bit, but we weren't moving quite as quickly. So for future reference, I don't know that that influences the board's decision tonight. You voted on that. But I do want to be clear that that is a capacity, and we certainly would have been and always will be in the future, ready to answer board member questions about any item on the consent agenda, whether it's in public or as this would have required in closed session, given that it's a human resource item.
And my apologies to board members for not having that at my fingertips, given the lack of previous notice of an item being pulled from the consent agenda.
Thank you for the opportunity just to be sure that we're all clear. And should the situation occur again, we'll have that resource. And we will, as I mentioned, be very ready to support the board with requested information.
All right, so Item 9.1 is a closed session for labor negotiations. The next item on the agenda is a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D-05, Subdivision 3B, which allows the board to go into closed session pursuant to labor negotiation strategy. The closed session will be convened immediately following passage of the motion in the Edison Building, Main Floor Conference Room. Pursuant to the law I have cited, will someone make a motion to go into closed session?
Still move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to go on to closed session. We need a roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Director Garcia.
Aye.
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 The board is moving into closed session at 7:26 PM.
Maybe you should put Justin there and just do his little...
Put Justin in the, Justin in his open seat with a, with an iPad. All right. Director, Clerk McLaughlin, will you please read the list of people present in the closed session?
We had Chair Nathan, Mr. Carlson, Clerk McLaughlin, Treasurer Marvin, Director Garcia, Ms. Sam, the Assistant Board Clerk, Director Cook, Mr. Bakken, Director Barlow, Vice Chair Workman, and Superintendent Pacheco.
Thank you. Before we move on to the next agenda item, I would like to entertain a motion to reconsider the vote on agenda item 5.6, probationary teacher nonrenewal. Some background is Robert Tools of Order gives us the opportunity to reconsider the vote. This does not mean that the vote is being reversed. It gives us the opportunity to put the consent agenda item back on our agenda, and then we could implement the consent agenda policy that would allow us to move into closed session to discuss a personnel issue. A motion to reconsider has to pass with a majority vote, so I would need a motion and a second, and the motion needs to come from someone who voted in the affirmative of the decision at the beginning.
In the affirmative of which decision?
Of the consent agenda 5.6.
The original.
Right, yes. So would anybody like to make a motion to reconsider?
Sorry, Justin.
Okay, hearing none. We will move on to agenda item. Board questions and responses, the questions submitted by board members before the meeting and related answers are available here. Item 9.4 is our updated ABCD with agenda items for every school board meeting for the rest of the year. Are there any future agenda items board members would like to raise for consideration for a future meeting agenda? Hearing none, upcoming board dates, June 11th at 5:30 PM is a study session, June 18th, 5:30 PM a regular meeting, July 16th, 5:30 PM a regular meeting, and July 23rd, 5:30 PM a study session. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:10 PM.